I'm gonna count down. I'm gonna ask Kevin, are we streaming? It says we're prepping.
It says recording.
I'll check the stream to see if it's up.
Thanks, because it just still says live preparing.
Yeah, it usually takes a few seconds.
Mine is saying recording, so.
Yep, I see recording. That's Kevin. Very good hands, we're all live right now, so hold on.
I don't see it up there yet.
Okay. Says we're not on Facebook Live yet, so let me see what's going on.
So can I just read the whole script for me and Scott, so Scott doesn't have to read it too?
I don't see why not.
I'm say Leah Fabian Chairman of the Board of Selectmen and Scott Holmes Chairman of the Lakeville Park Commission.
Okay, Scott, are you okay with that, or do you want to read the script?
I think he's mute.
No, by all means, go right ahead.
Okay, thanks. Are we ready?
It's still scrolling, so.
Says meeting is now streaming live on Facebook.
There we go, that's what I'm waiting. Anyone see it yet?
I do, yep.
Perfect, alright Leah, we can go ahead.
Alright, so it is 6:03 PM, April 23rd, 2020. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting joint with the Park Commission of Lakeville. I'm gonna go through the all the introductions for remote meetings, and then we'll read a script and then I'll introduce everyone. So, in accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law C30A Section 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the April 23rd, 2020 public meeting of the Board of Selectmen shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/LakeCam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecom.tv backslash. Um, so, this is the the rules for remote remotely conducted open meetings. So as a preliminary matter, this is Chairman of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen and on behalf of Scott Holmes, who is present from the Park Commission, Chairman of the Park Commission, I'm going to go through all the following. Let's permit us to confirm that all members, staff and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. So when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. So we have Rich LaCamera.
We just dropped off the screen.
Okay. We'll come back to Rich. We have Scott Holmes.
Here.
Mike Nolan from the Park Commission.
I'm here.
Jesse Medford, Park Commission.
Here.
Joe Korsia, Park Commission.
Yeah.
Nellie, can you say? I forget.
Woodburn.
Woodburn from the Park Commission. Executive Assistant. We have Franklin Moniz from, he is the Highway Superintendent.
Yep.
We have Maureen Candido, who is our Lakeville Town Administrator.
Hello.
Tracy Craig McGee from Executive Assistant to the Selectmen in Lakeville.
Here.
And Rich LaCamera, are you back, Rich?
I won't see him yet. And he's coming back now, he's just next.
Okay. I was gonna say, I can keep going for a second here, and then we can confirm him when he gets back. We don't really have any other anticipated speakers, so this is the open meeting of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen and Lakeville Park Commission, and it's being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020 due to the current state of the emergency and the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor orders suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. Meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lakeville Board of Selectmen is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's website and the Park Commission. For Zoom meetings, please note that the meeting is being recorded and that all attendees are participating by video conference accordingly. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and take care not to screen your computer. Anything that you broadcast will be captured by the meeting materials, all supporting materials that have been provided. Members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. Public is encouraged to follow along using the public agenda unless I note otherwise. All supporting, sorry, we are now turning. Before we turn to the first agenda item, I would like to give the Parks Commission an opportunity to open their meeting.
Back, I lost the internet for some reason.
Okay, so Rich LaCamera is here too with our attendance. So Scott, if you guys want to open your meetings too?
Okay. At 6:10, you open the meeting of the Parks Department. Mike Nolan, are you here?
Yes, sorry, I'm still here.
Justin Bradley?
He is unable to attend.
Jesse Medford? Jesse, are you here?
Yeah. Still on mute, yeah, here.
And Joe Korsia, are you here?
Yes, sir.
And Nellie's here. So we'll be convening at 6:10.
Okay, I'm gonna continue on, so we are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each name to provide any comment, question or motions. Please hold until your name is called. I find that we've been doing okay with that, but there is a lot of us, so we just try to not speak over each other. Please try to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking, and always please try to spear, speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquial with, in colloquy with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. As stated earlier, we will not be having public comments at this time. And finally, if there are any votes taken, each vote taken will be conducted by roll call vote. Anybody have any questions? Alright, so agenda item number two, meet with the Park Commission to discuss the structure of the Park Department. So we do have on the agenda the conversation that's been taking place for a little bit with some retirements from the Park Commission folks and just some new changes that we'd like to talk about, but because I'm the one that hasn't been working on this totally, Rich, I don't know if you would like to take over for a little bit to get us going.
Okay. Maureen and I and Nate, you know, have met with with both Scott and Mike Nolan at least once together, and then I think I think it was Mike Nolan another time or two other times, but anyway, so what we were talking about is restructuring, you know, the staffing, you know, at the the Park Commission where we would have the the maintenance of anything outside of the building be maintained by the Highway Department. And what was being proposed was that we hire a laborer or maintenance person, a full-time laborer or maintenance person, and a full-time foreman for the parks as well. And the way that it was going to be structured was that the full-time foreman would be paid for by the town and report to the Highway Superintendent, and the full-time laborer year-round as well would report to the foreman, and the laborer would be paid by the Park Commission. So that's kinda basically where we are, and what has already been done is that the job for the laborer has been posted and and a person has been, has been hired, and it was a part-time employee that worked for the Highway Department, and he's already started, and we've posted the foreman's position, which is gonna be a little more difficult, you know, at this time to be able to get a person in place because of a number of things going on. So that's kinda where we are, so I guess I guess the first thing, you know, we need to talk about is that is everybody okay, you know, with that new structure that's being proposed?
Okay. Um, so as far as I'm concerned, I know that we, you know, you guys have put a lot of work into this. I've read everything. I am, I am okay with that, but Scott, if I can turn it over to you, I don't know if you wanna talk about it or talk about it with your board or have any comments, questions, just somehow to get us kinda going here.
Yeah, I'm not sure if Joe or Jesse have any comments. I don't know how much of this they've seen.
I'll speak, this is Joe. I was, I was looking at the things that Maureen sent out the other day, the strange changes to the structure, and comparing it to something that came out like a week and a half ago, and there's some differences on there, so I'm just, it seems that it's not consistent on what might have been agreed upon. And there's some items on here that are news to me, and I just, I think we need to talk about them. I know as a Commission, we're gonna have a meeting Monday night to discuss this. So I guess, I don't know how we want to handle it, if we want to go down line by line, we'll take a look at this. I'll open up to Jesse, Mike and Scott, what do you, how do you want to do this?
We definitely, I think, would need to talk with each other about line by line first, and I don't think we can really get the consensus on all of that right now.
I guess the question is, okay, if we don't agree line by line right now, do we agree with the overall structure that the Highway Department's gonna hire a foreman, has already hired the laborer, and those two individuals would be reporting to the Highway Department?
I have a question. I'm not sure where the funding is gonna come from us for the full-time laborer. We didn't have it in our budget. What were you thinking?
The budget that you, the budget that you put together that we have, oh geez, there we go again.
We hear you.
I don't know what happened to my video, but the budget that was put together, you know, showed a $35,000 from you guys, total of $35,000, you know, for a maintenance person, and actually, Mike Vickery, you know, at this point was between, you know, his salary and between his longevity and so forth, that, you know, he was in the $33,000 to $34,000 range.
Forty, $43,000?
$33,000.
Thirty-three? Okay.
That was more than that.
Yeah, that seems short.
Pardon me?
That seems off.
It was over 40 when you added everything together.
Yeah.
And that was only for a part-time person?
Yeah, so what I'm saying is that you're getting, he worked 33 weeks out of the year for the Park Commission, and we're talking about an employee that's gonna work 52 weeks out of the year. So the difference between the two is not a lot of money to be able to provide two full-time people, the town paying for one and the Park Commission paying for the other.
I have a question. Do you think there's gonna be work for two guys full-time in the middle of winter?
Oh absolutely, because.
Franklin can answer that, because that's the question I asked Franklin too.
So Franklin, we have you.
Franklin, can you?
Yep. So yeah, there's always full-time work to be done there. I mean, I met with Joe down at John Pond. He has a laundry list of things that need to be done over there, which would be all fall to to spring work, it's nothing that would be done in the summertime. In the summer, you just gotta concentrate on your basic maintenance, and then once the grass stops growing, you move into doing tree work, you move into cutting those trails or fixing fencing or, you know, all the odd jobs and things that can't get done during the summer. And then I've also talked to Nate, where if he has special projects going on, I'd be able to also assist him with those projects.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Scott and Mike? I think that was Scott, right, that asked the question?
Yep.
Okay.
I, um.
I'm in real quick, I just wanted to add two more things. Also, it would be the maintenance of the, all the equipment that, that it's at the parks that ends up being done in the winter, and you don't have to supplement in the fall and spring with with additional seasonal help if you have these two go on. So again, even, you're, you're not getting like for like in this, you're getting a much greater presence in the park at all times for this change. Sorry, just wanted to throw that in there.
Oh, that's okay. I just wanted to say, first of all, it's nice to see that the town and this Board of Selectmen is actually willing to put some funding into the parks. As most people don't know, the Parks Enterprise Fund is a totally unfunded by any taxpayer money at this point. We raise all of our own money, and it's great to see the town, you know. We appreciate that, you know, that you guys have taken the step to help us out. I guess my only concern would be as we keep talking about the structure, and I don't know how we would want to be changing the structure of the Park Commission. We're talking about basically having the Highway Department take over all of the grounds and the maintenance of the grounds and stuff. So the rest of the, but the rest of our duties, I believe, would remain the same.
Yeah. So I, I, I understand, you know, when we're saying restructuring, the restructuring has nothing to do with the Park Commission and all the, the things that you guys per se do, like the taking care of Loom Pond Lodge and all the league stuff, and, you know, it's basically just for the grounds, the external maintenance of the grounds. Would, Rich, you agree with that?
Yeah, that's what's being proposed. I mean, that, as we said before, that, you know, they would be responsible for anything inside the Loom Pond Lodge building, and then the Highway Department will be responsible for anything exterior that, you know, needs to be done. I guess the question would be that, you know, I, I don't know how if you decided not to do this, that, you know, with a part-time person that was working 33 hours a week previously, that, you know, with two brand-new, very large, you know, size of football fields or soccer fields or whatever they are, what would have the plan be for the Park Commission to maintain those?
We would have hired, had to hire people. I mean, we've been talking about this plan for quite a while now, so we haven't hired anyone, but that would have been the plan. What kind of? I'm not, I'm not arguing with this, I, you know, I've met with you folks, you know, before privately with Frank and you guys, and I think it makes sense for the Highway Department, you know, he has the skills and he has the people and he has the equipment to do it. The only question I have, some of the verbiage in this document that you sent, says about, you know, like capital projects and stuff like that. I think it's important for the, the Commission to still be able to control the use of our retained earnings for capital projects.
And why would it do that, Mike?
Huh?
Those are your decisions to make.
Okay, it's just, I'm looking at what was sent over.
So if you, Mike, if you look at the new one that I sent over last night, I addressed your concerns correctly when you had told me about that, and I kind of made it a little bit where so all equipment purchases and maintenance associated with park grounds will now be the responsibility of the Highway Department. That's what I had changed and made that language.
Okay, and any, any, the way I see it is, is any, you know, capital projects like building new fields like that should be a joint venture between the Parks Commission and, and the Highway Department.
I don't think anybody, I don't think anybody has a problem with that, Mike.
Okay.
I think, I want to point out one other thing that I think is important, that you have your retained earnings and your capital items. I mean, I know that you, you do things like, you know, gonna renovate the tennis courts and the basketball courts and all that, you know, basically would remain the same and come out of your retained earnings. But I think now, and you and I have had this conversation, that I think we need to take it to the next step, like we did with Joe Korsia and went down with Franklin and Nate and myself, and we talked about improvements, capital improvements that need to be made there that are not funded by the Park Commission. And we need to do that both at the Ted Williams Camp, and we need to do that both at the Clare Pond. In honor for us to get a list of priorities to say, okay, these are the things we need to do, and about how, how much they're gonna cost and how long it's gonna take. And my feeling is, and I told you this, that the town needs to provide some additional funding to do some of those projects, because you can't do it, you know, with the budget that you have. You can only do maintenance items, so if there's main, you know, improvements or capital expenditures that need to be done, you know, the town has to put some money up to do that, and I think we agreed that that's one of the steps that we need to take.
Well, that's great to hear, that's wonderful to hear, it really is, because as you said, we've been, you know, struggling along for years now, basically trying to pick one capital project per year that we could do, like the bathrooms that we did over at John Pond, and this year we did the fields, you know, the north side fields there. But there's so many other things that need to be done as well, I agree. If the town is willing to, you know, fund it, we just, we're just used to, you know, working on.
On what you have, right.
We're on our own, yeah.
Right, and, and again, you know, I've had several conversations with, you know, Franklin, and Franklin, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, his, his thinking is by doing, you know, everyday maintenance, that we, you know, give longer life to, you know, like he explained to me that once, you know, we do some work to the parking lots, every fall he'll go in and take care of them and prep them for the winter, and then come the spring, fix anything that might have, you know, happened because of weather, so we, the, the flooding issues that we have at two of the parking lots there won't get to the point that, you know, there'll be every day, every year kind of maintenance on that. And I would love to see that, because in all honesty, you know, it's a lot for the Park Commission to try to come up with for money to pay for, you know, all new parking lot work and, and everything else, so, you know, Franklin, I don't know if you wanna, you know, say yes, I got that right, or no, or add anything here, but I think his regular maintenance schedule will probably give you guys some longevity on, on things there.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that, just like what we've talked about. You know, we're doing the soccer parking lot and, and the karate studio parking lot. But even that being said, like the soccer parking lot, that's gonna need continuous maintenance along with the parking lots closest to Loom Pond Lodge over there. That's something, once we get in there and start grading, I mean, it's something, that's where the two full-time guys, you know, one having the licenses, one not, but that's where they come in handy with. Like we said, like I was just saying, like in fall, that's when you bring in material, you re-grade the field, I mean, the parking lots, try to fix any drainage issues, it gives you guys to work on these projects that otherwise we'd be contracting out and paying pretty big money for, as we see.
Yep, yep, so our hope is that by, you know, assigning these tasks to the Highway Department where they have a lot of this equipment, they have the, you know, the, the material that we're gonna, on an ongoing basis, we're, we're gonna be doing a much better job as a town of taking care of, you know, this beautiful, these beautiful parks that we own and not just leaving the burden to just the Park Commission. We try to raise money and not always be able to get to what it is that, you know, that you guys, it's no secret, you guys knew, know that there's work that needs to be done there, and you know that there's no way you can raise that much money every year. I think a lot of people in Lakeville would be surprised to find out that, you know, tax dollars don't directly, you know, unless the Selectmen decide to spend some extra money there, go there, so. And that's what we're doing, you know, that, that's what we're doing, so.
I think a perfect example of that, Mike, was that, you know, we've stepped up to fix these parking lots together, you know, with the Park Commission. I mean, the town is, you know, putting up $79,000, and you're putting up, you know, roughly $30,000. I mean, that's, that's a pretty big investment, you know, that we were willing to make, that these have been an ongoing problem that needs to be addressed, so those are just examples of things that, you know, we got together, we discussed the solution, and we came up with a solution to fix them, and we're about to approve those contracts to move forward. So I mean, other examples, are we gonna be able to do everything? Of course not, but at least if we get a priorities together of what needs to be done, then we could try to work together to talk about funding from both sides, and so, you know. That's my goal anyways, and I've said that right from the beginning, that, you know, I, I'm for trying to do things to try to make these parks better.
And Leah, if I may? We're all about trying to find operational efficiencies when we can, and being able to put these type of things in the hands of the Highway Department under Franklin and have, you know, a fully supervised professional staff be in there day in and day out to support you guys and not have to rely on, you know, part-time people who are great, but it's a different level investment when you have your full-time people working and are days in and days out, and they're gonna see things oftentimes when unnoticed until one of you guys came in and picked it up. It's gonna be inefficient for sure, and it's gonna pay off in the way the parks operate and, and how much we can get done in a year.
I think the other, the other thing that's been, been. I think the other, the other thing that's been ignored, you know, is Clear Pond. Clear Pond needs a ton of work, you know, going forward, just a lot of work that needs to be done over there. So once again, you know, using the highway resources and this couple of seasonal maintenance people that we ought to be able to get some of it done. And then in the wintertime, we can address major issues, but I, I don't know if, I'm sure you guys have been over there. I mean, there's trees down and limbs down, I mean, they're all over the place. And you know, if we don't do it with the highway department, then you're gonna have to hire people on the outside, you know, to do that, which is not cost-effective for everybody. So, you know, we're trying to help, you know, to, to try to, you know, alleviate some of these problems. So I've said enough, so.
Well, we, you know, we do what we can with our limited funds and, you know, like you said, Clear Pond Park, every year, there's, there's, we had, one year it was flooded, we weren't even able to open it for a whole year. And then after that, it was a huge mess that we had to clean up. And yeah, we had to hire part-time people and we did it, a lot of the work ourselves. Right, Scott?
Yes.
We, you know, it's gonna, it's something, you know, the park commission has done a lot of, we're a hands-on type of commission and we do a lot of the work ourselves. And we're totally, we're not part-time, we're totally voluntary.
Do you wanna continue doing that? Do you wanna start cutting grass?
I, I do.
You wanna start cutting grass? So I mean, I, I think that, you know, this is a good chance to, to have the town and the park commission address some issues that have been ignored for a long, long time. If you don't, if you don't wanna do it, that's okay. Believe me, Franklin's got plenty of work to do. And, but, you know, he sees, you know, what's going on. It's just like any other area, whether it's the library or the COA, I mean, he gets requests, he goes over there and he helps them, whether it's with equipment or whatever. We're gonna do the same thing. So hopefully, you know, we can move forward with this.
So I, I don't, I don't know at this point if you guys wanna talk, the park commission wants to talk a little bit amongst yourselves, if we wanna do that, or if you want, you know, if you have any other questions. I, I think we've made it obvious that the position of the selectmen right now is to, you know, to actually help the, the parks get the outside work done. As far as all the other things that the park commission does, we are not looking to change that structure, you know, in, in any way. It's just basically the grounds of the parks that we're looking to, to, you know, commit to, to helping with. So I don't know if you have other questions?
Well, Joe, Joe Kosher said he had questions.
I got a few, you don't mind.
Okay.
I was getting, I can't get my video going, so sorry about that.
That's okay, we can hear you.
All right. Just looking at the sheet that Marvin sent out, just going down to the top there, the two seasonal maintenance people. I, I'm just trying to understand, where are those now?
So if I can answer, Madam Chair? So the way the parks currently has it structured, when you hire your seasonal people, they do like a myriad of, of tasks. They do the concession stand and they do some maintenance from talking to, I think it was Mike Nolan, that you don't have dedicated people that just do maintenance. They do other tasks in like Clear Pond Park. And we would wanna have just two dedicated people doing the maintenance in there. But there is the question of, you know, is that gonna be able to work? And is that gonna be able to work with what you guys, you know, have planned in? This is specifically Clear Pond Park.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yep.
As far as the maintenance slash snack, snack shop people we have at Clear Pond, there's, there's not, I mean, it's, you know, cleaning the toilets, you know, weed whacking a little bit, picking up the beaches and toting the trash. I, I mean, is that what we wanna be hiring outside people for that? I, I'm, I'm just kinda confused because the way it's been in the past is that those people rotate in and out of the snack stand. Today they're in the snack stand, tomorrow they're picking up trash and cleaning the bathrooms and cleaning the beach and weed whacking. And then the next day they're back in the snack stand. So I, I, I'm, I'm just kinda confused as where you wanna go with that. I mean, is, is that what you're looking for the seasonal maintenance people?
So we were looking for them just to be able to do the maintenance of the grounds in there and not any of, Franklin doesn't wanna have anyone reporting up that does anything besides maintenance.
I understand.
Yeah. So when we were talking about the numbers and looking over the numbers of how many people, we were trying to make a guesstimate of what that would mean as far as two part-time people doing the work that would need to get done, that's being done right now in the rotation of seven people. I think that was the number, seven? Mike Nolan?
Yeah. I, I was thinking about this too, after we talked about it. I don't see that, why, there's not any reason, Scott, that we couldn't keep a couple of people or three people that work as a custodial type of thing at the pond. And those are the ones who would work the, do the cleaning and the snack shack and whatever. And some of the other seasonal maintenance people could work with, with Frank. And also Frank, I think you'd probably wanna put him in other parks too, like at John Pond and you know, you could move him around. That was kinda what I came up with. These are some of the small details that we're gonna have to work out.
Yeah, we just didn't know the number because it doesn't exist now. It's not like you're moving an existing position. You would basically be splitting up the way that you task people now and making them slightly more specialized in order to get this thing. But that's definitely a talking point and something to, to iron out as it comes around. And then, you know, on top of that, this year might be different than every other year anyways.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, to, to add to that, you know, we were pigeonholed. When we hired someone for Clear Pond, they're getting paid one rate. They were not supposed to be allowed to be working at the other parks.
Yes.
Because of those different rates.
Yes.
So.
This would not, this would clear that pathway and they would be getting paid a rate to do all.
Okay, well, I mean.
Yeah, but we just don't, we don't know what that number is. Is it worth?
I, I, I understand, I understand. I mean, yeah, we're, we're treading on new ground and we've got to.
Yeah, and, and you know, the biggest part for me is the whole Clear Pond part. I think that, you know, is gonna require a little bit more, you know, work for us planning right now, but for the most part though, I think it's something that's absolutely doable. I think pretty much everything else is, you know, is worked out. I think Clear Pond's the only thing that, you know, but again, we're, we're committing to helping, so we're not gonna come in and say, that's it, forget it. We're not doing, you know, we're, we're committing to try to get the grounds on a regular maintenance schedule. So I think that with all the part-timers and, and again, this year is gonna, I, I, you know, I don't wanna be the naysayer, but I hope we even are able to get Clear Pond open this year with the whole COVID-19 thing, so.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
If I may.
Yep.
Speaking for myself, as I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I, I know I have had conversations with each one of them. You know, we welcome the town's help. Believe me, we do. And, and we realize that there are a lot of things that are on this wish list out here that we're never gonna get to, or at least not in the next few years, because we just don't have the funds. And we do appreciate the fact that the town wants to contribute and help. We're, we're not against that. We're just trying to work everything out so that, you know, the communication between us and Frank or us and the supervisor or whomever, you know, so that we can give our little list of things, you know, that wouldn't necessarily be the daily maintenance things. I, I mean, one thing comes to mind and it's just a little thing, but it's, you know, at the end of soccer, you know, they have their daily, their, their, their big day at the end. And, you know, we need to move picnic tables over. I mean, that's not part of, you know, mowing the grass and taking care of the, those are just little things, you know, that, that come up all the time.
Yeah.
And, and we just need an open communication line. I mean, I think it's a great idea, you know, to, you know, if we know there's gonna be an outdoor wedding, you know, that, hey, we let Frank or the supervisor or whoever the person is gonna be designated to be know that so that they can make sure the grounds are great, you know, when they come. Because as we all want the grounds to be great because that's our selling feature, you know, little things do come up sporadically, you know, that, that need attention. But myself, you know, I'm, I'm ecstatic that the town wants to jump in and help because we haven't had that help in the past and, and it, it is appreciated. Let me say that to all the supporters of the selectmen. It is appreciated and we are excited about that. We just wanna make sure that everybody, everybody's in agreement with how things are working, that's all.
Yep, I understand that. You know, I mean, one example is, you know, with like some of the races and stuff, you know, and I actually dropped by the, the highway department one day and I said to Frank, I said, hey, do you send the sander, I mean, the, the, the street sweeper out? And he's like, as soon as I get the notification from the parks or from the selectman's office that we're having a race in town, goes right on the calendar and, you know, so. Yeah, so, and, and that's the kind of communication that I'm hoping. That's why we did include something, you know, a little bit in here. And of course, we're gonna have to, you know, this'll, this whole plan will, will evolve a little bit, but, and I know Frank, you can speak for yourself. I don't have to speak for you, but I know what you've told me is that, you know, as soon as you guys know there's an outdoor wedding, let him know and he'll have it, you know, and as soon as you have a cancellation, let him know so that, you know, as long as the communication is going, I don't, I don't really see any, you know, and like Joe had his list for John Pond, you know. So you guys might want a tree down somewhere for whatever reason, but I, I think it makes sense that if Frank has scheduled planned to take down 20 other trees in town, that he can schedule it at that same time. Unless it's a safety issue, you know, then of course we all know that we're gonna try to get it down as soon as possible, you know. So I, I'm really hopeful that, you know, this is gonna work the way that, that we think it will. And, and you know what? I, I think I'm a volunteer, Scott, you're a volunteer, you've been volunteering for years, Mike, you too, everyone. I, we're doing this for our town. We're not doing this, you know. So we, I think we all love Lakeville to begin with, so I think we're all really invested to make sure this works.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I, you know, by all means. I mean, I mean, one of the little things, you know, we talk about the outdoor maintenance. I mean, you know, right now, one of, one of Bobby Beach's, you know, we've pigeonholed him that, you know, at the end of the week, he has to mow around the lodge, you know, because of the weekend events. Regardless of whether there's an event or not, people are in looking at the building, you know, we're trying to sell the building, so we want it to look, you know, so it's like, I, I've said to him, it's gonna rain on Friday, mow on Thursday, but I want it mowed for the weekend and hand mowed because it looks so much better hand mowed. You know, I mean, we can continue to have Bobby do that or, you know, Frank can have his guys do it. We, we just gotta work out the semantics, you know, and, and, and get it all. I mean, because the problem we had was, you know, we put irrigation in around the building and Mike didn't wanna use the hand mower and he kept lopping off the heads to the, to the irrigation, you know. So that's when I said, Mike, you don't have to mow it anymore. And I asked Bobby to do it by hand. But it looks nicer and, you know, we're not destroying as many heads.
Yep. And I do, I think that, you know, this summer will be, you know, really where we sort of figure out all the glitches or not, or see how good it actually can work. But, you know, so I don't know if you guys wanna talk a little bit amongst yourselves. I don't know. Maureen, are we looking for a formal vote from the parks commission? Are we?
They don't need to, to vote on it. We wanna make sure that everyone's on the same page about, you know, the things, because they, there are different kind of different wording than it was two weeks ago. And that was based on what the parks had said. Oh, I'm not clear on, on what you mean here. And then we tried to put down as much as possible. But there's always gonna be little things that we need to tweak and try to work together with. The only thing I think we're really looking for is the commitment to work together and get this done.
I just got to Madam Chair, I just have a.
Go ahead, keep going, Joe.
Once again, I've, I've got John Pond, so I'm a little selfish here because everything talks about Ted Williams. That's Clear Pond. One, one thing I did notice on the second page here about, it said parks operations, it says that we're gonna be responsible for daily trash at all parks. And hopefully that's not true, because I know in the past, highway department was taking care of John Pond. It was disappearing every week, I knew that. So I don't want that to change at all.
Yeah, but they, you do take, you do take care of trash at Clear Pond and Ted Williams currently, right?
Correct.
I'm sorry, I did forget John Pond in here. Frank, do you speak to what you do?
We only did garbage in John Pond up until you guys hired your maintenance people.
Okay.
Okay, so not for the summer?
Not all summer, no.
Well.
So that, that is definitely something that we will need to work out on that. We, I just wanna, I just wanna be sure who's gonna be doing it so that we get it done.
Yeah, I don't wanna have to be taking it to the landfill myself, I don't have to.
Yeah.
I'm hoping maybe the seasonal workers or whoever was doing it before will keep it up.
Okay.
But we don't have a dumpster down there. We don't want a dumpster down there because everybody will be using that dumpster.
You'll get everyone's trash.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll figure that out. Joe, I'm sorry, I forgot you.
No, no problem. I'm, I'm used to it. Just one other thing, I think we've all hit it on, I think we're all, you know, heading in the right direction. Once again, I think Franklin's been great to deal with a little, a few times I dealt with him. Communication, how do we keep up the communication so we have a nice line to Franklin? Franklin's got some communication to us. So we're all on the same page. We don't, and we don't end up saying, well, that's Franklin, I don't know what he's doing. Or I don't know what the park commission's doing. How do we bridge that and keep it going that way?
Well, Frank, what would you like to see? You're the one with the experience here. What would you like to see?
So as, as we talked about, the day-to-day maintenance, there really won't be any communication on that because it, it'll just be getting done. And then as far as special projects go, it'll be, you know, whoever's, like Mike Nolan's the guy at Ted Williams, he'll be sending me an email saying, you know, I'd really like you to get the trails cut and the sign put up and things like that. And then I tell him, you know, those are, that's a fall job and we'll get in there and definitely get that done. Same thing with you, Joe, you give me an email. Now, if it's a public safety issue, like you see a tree leaning, things like that, obviously we get on it right away. But that's where those two guys, like we talked about just a little while ago, all those side projects that aren't daily maintenance projects, those are where, what they're doing from spring to, I mean, fall to spring. So you really wanna just shoot those in. Same thing with calendars. So you talk about like moving picnic tables, all that, that's a, it, it's just simple. It's, it's, you tell me, you know, the end of soccer is September 12th or whatever the day may be and the picnic tables need to be here, and then that's where they'll be. It's just as long as we get a heads up ahead of time, we get it on the calendar. I really don't wanna be getting calls the day before and things like that unless it's, you know, something out of the norm comes up. But just as long as I'm getting a calendar of events and, and what needs to be done, I mean, it's, it's things I've dealt with in the past, so.
Okay. Is that good, Joe? Does that clarify for you?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
I have one other question.
Yep. Maureen, did you wanna say something?
I said Mike Nolan had something, he was waving.
Hold my hand up like school. There, we have a couple, several projects in, in the works, one of, you know, one of which is the drainage projects that that Franklin is gonna take over and that's perfectly fine. I had started those, but that's, that's his forte and, you know, that's fine. There are some other ones like the, like those fields, Franklin, I don't, we haven't really talked about who's gonna take over, you know, from here on those two brand-new fields there. We still have a ton of work to do over there. We had been trying to contract it out, not contracted out, but we have got, some of the leagues have made volunteers and made donations and stuff of the leagues have made volunteers and made donations and stuff to get a lot of it done, um, you want, I, can I continue to work with you as far as coordinating that, or is that something you just want to take over?
Uh, well, I definitely want to work with you at first, um, just to know what your, you know, what your vision is for, and what exactly needs to get done over there, um, and then we kind of just go from there, I'm not, I'm not familiar with any of that yet as far as those fields go, what needs to be done, or what we're looking at there, um, but, yeah, I mean, I'm more than willing to work with each, uh, Park Commissioner that is in charge of each park to make sure these things get done, I mean, that's, that's the the best line of communication, I guess we could say, as long as I'm dealing with one guy for one park, that would kind of be, uh, you know, how we would move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, so, um, maybe we could just, uh, hear from the Park Commission that you're okay with this, without, I I mean, I don't know if we need, I don't, Maureen said we don't need a formal vote, but just, you know, um, some sort of indication that it sounds to me like everyone's on the, on the same page, um, I, I wish you guys weren't so shocked to that, where, that the town is willing to help, but we're here, and I I like that, I like knowing that everyone's gonna be working together, so, you know, the parks is really a beautiful, you know, part of what makes Lakeville beautiful, so, you know, and a lot of our kids have grown up playing there and, you know, everything else, so, um, so, anyway, so if you guys, you know, I don't know what you want to do, talk, whatever, not necessarily a vote, but are we in agreement here?
I I guess I had one more question, and and that referred to like, I mean, um, fertilizer and things like that, that that we currently, um, purchase and schedule, I I mean, is that gonna be continued part of our budget, or is, or is Frank gonna take that over, um, also?
Maureen?
I don't have.
I talked to Frank, I talked to Franklin about that, um, he, I did it this year because I was already in process, but he has, uh, better contacts, um, um, they, they can certainly, you know, take it over, um, next year, it's in our budget, we've always carried a line item for, for materials, um, and we can just work that, I I feel that we, you know, we can work that out, Franklin, you know, whatever he says he needs, we'll water up and he can do what he has to do with it.
Okay.
I think, I mean, does that work with you, Franklin?
Um, well, ideally, if that's a line item in your budget, specific to the grounds for fertilization and things of that nature, I would rather just take that line item and move it into the Highway Department. If I'm assuming the responsibility for the fertilizer and everything that goes with it, I'd rather not have to contact the parks to ask to spend the money to then go and fertilize the parks.
Well, that's something we can work out, it's a small detail.
Yep.
Rich, are you still with us here on the budget part there, because you're our budget guy, too?
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Leah?
Um, are you okay with changing the line item, if that's what Frank and, uh, Mike figure is the?
Well, that's up to them, if they want to do that, I mean, if, you know, they can stay in the Park Commission budget either way, I mean, all the other town buildings have their own budget for fertilizing, so if the Park Commission wants to keep it that way, that's okay, too, you know, either way.
So, well, 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 we'll see what you guys come up with, and so clearly, we're, we're okay with going either way on that, so, you know, okay, um, Scott, anything else? Do you, go ahead, Rich, we'll let Rich go.
I just want to say, I just want to say two things, you know, I know Jesse's got to go to another meeting, um, you know, as far as equipment purchases and maintenance associated with the, uh, is gonna be response, the maintenance of the equipment will be the responsibility of the Highway Department, and all equipment, now, we have equipment that can already be utilized at the park, that they don't have to buy their own equipment, but one thing I know that we have to buy is we have to buy a new lawnmower, because the lawnmower that's there is, I don't know, 30 years old or more, at least.
1972.
There you go, so it's been taken a lot, so actually, um, Franklin already, what he did was, he went out and he tried to get some quotes on replacing that one, or he came up with a better alternative, I think, uh, is came up with purchasing two, um, what are they, John Deere's, I don't know what they are, um.
Yeah, 979 Z-tracks, right, six foot.
So what that would do is then he would even have, be able to have two people, you know, mowing the grass at the same time, which would cut down the number of hours and so forth, so he priced that already out, and that's $39,000, and, um, we had planned to try to do that, you know, with the capital, the town's capital plan this coming year, but based upon the situation that we're all in right now, uh, we're not sure if we're gonna be able to do that, but the plan was to try to replace that with that, and once again, the town putting up the capital money, not out of your budget, but out of the town's capital plan to fund those two pieces of equipment, just so you know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, uh, one other thing as far as equipment goes, Rich and Franklin, um, there are, I I mentioned it to, uh, to Maureen, and I I know she probably ran it by Frank, but, um, some of the things like the club cars and the hand mowers and, uh, blowers and stuff like that is gonna have to still be available to our part-time people, that, that's not gonna be a problem, right?
No, not at all.
Yeah, and Frank is committed to putting it in a way that you guys can access it without having to go through him.
Okay.
You know, wherever you, it's gonna be stored.
Yeah.
It's gonna be somewhere where you guys.
He should drag the fields and stuff like that, so, okay.
Okay, um, the one other thing I want to make sure that we were clear on, I think we're all set on the soccer field drainage project, you know, that, you know, everybody's, you know, in agreement with that, the town's gonna pay that side, and then the, the karate studio drainage, um, in the paving project, and Franklin, maybe you want to explain why we have to do the tra, the drainage project and the paving, not exactly at the same time, but very close to it, and Franklin has already got paving work scheduled for July 13th, that week, um, so the paving company is gonna be available, so we got to make sure, and you can explain it, Frank, better than I can, that why we need to do the drainage, we can do the drainage right now and get the parking lot all ready, but we can't let it sit for two or three months, and then, because we're gonna have to grade it again, and we don't want to get into that, so Franklin, you want to say that one more thing?
Yeah, you explained it pretty well, I mean, it's, uh, for one, I, I really don't like the idea of putting in the drainage with a, a processed material, um, top on it, because all that's gonna go in your drain, so the less amount we can, um, you know, the the more we can stop that from happening, the better off we are, but also, just as he stated, I mean, it would be like probably another five, six grand to get a grader in there before they pave, and they would definitely have to do that if we waited too long, um, just because you need to have a good grade, if you, if you pave over something, even if there's, if the grade's off just a little bit, you can end up with big puddling, and there's no fixing that with the asphalt, other than ripping it up and repaving it, so, um, it it's kind of, uh, you don't want to kind of wait too long and have to spend that extra money in the long run.
Yeah, and if you remember, I, uh, have it scheduled in the contract for them to be done by June 1st, the, with the drainage projects, so that would fall right in line with not having too long of a time before the next project getting, uh, completed.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
So, just let me understand, so Franklin, in your, in your expert opinion, would, would it probably be the best not to use that parking lot at all until we can get it paved? And 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 would that save money in not having to get it regraded?
I don't know if that's feasible for you guys, but, um, yes, that, I mean, if, by the time drainage is done, if we could wait it out, and then honestly, if that's what he does, then I can, when they're doing the drainage project, then I can have them do the project ready, the pavement, because what's gonna happen is even if we do it and you're gonna use that, um, parking lot, they're gonna have to put that structure at level with the process, so that means I'm gonna have to send my guys in to, to raise the structure, so that way, when we put the four inches of pavement, it all lines up, so, um, yeah, ideally, yes, I don't know if that's something that's feasible, even if we, I, I mean, that's a great idea, I would say, if it's something we can do.
Yeah, I I, I mean, you know, it, it, in, in my feeling is, if, if that's what we need to do, then that's what we'll do, I mean, then they're gonna have to use the other parking lot, and, and, you know, it's, it's a short-term inconvenience for a great long-term fix, and I, I think that, you know, they, they, they've struggled with that parking lot long enough that, that they can go a couple of months with not parking there, um, in order to understand that, you know, we're gonna put pavement down and and you're gonna have a great parking lot there.
Yep.
I, I mean, I, I think we can work it out.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, it's not the middle of winter, so we're not asking people to walk from a further distance in the freezing cold, you know, whatever, so, um, that's a, that's actually a really good idea, Scott.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, if that's gonna save money in having to regrade or, you know, do anything like that, um, that, that's my feeling, I mean, obviously, you know, I I'd have to confer with the rest of the commissioners, but, um, I, I, I just see it, you know, people got to understand that we're trying to fix, you know, fix the situation, and if it's gonna be a little inconvenient, um, it's gonna be a lot better than what it is right now.
Yeah, okay, so, does anyone else have any other questions?
I'm waving at you again.
Oh, Mike, okay, I'm sorry, Mike.
I just wanted to say also on the paving, um, and, uh, I don't know who put together the costs yet, Maureen, whether it was you or or Richer, but, um, I see that, um, the Park Commission, um, is only asking to put in $31,000, um, towards that, um, the whole thing, right, the whole?
Yeah.
The, the, um, uh, the drainage project and the, um, paving?
Balance of the paving.
Okay, and you're gonna take, we want to take $5,300 out of equipment, which works probably pretty well, if we're gonna, if you guys are gonna fund a couple of machines, so we won't need that, but that's, um, that's a deal, I think, for the Park Department, we could talk about that, but.
Well, you won't, you won't need that, that additional money, Mike, until after July 1st now, if you don't want to, or you can take it out now, either way.
Who knows what the budget's gonna look like by July?
I know, right?
Okay, thank you.
So, um, Rich, are you all set with all of this, do you want to move to the, the quotes now and do that, or?
Sure, we can, we can do that, yeah.
Okay, so, I'm just gonna read, um, we did receive a memo from the Park Commission, um, so we're moving on to agenda item number three, which is, uh, review the quotes and award the contracts for those two drainage projects, and we did receive a memo, um, on Mon, uh, from the Park Commission, and it says, on Monday, April 13th, 2020, the Lakeville Park Commission held a virtual meeting and discussed the current bids for the draining project for the parking area on Ted Williams Camp located at Lakeville Mixt martial arts studio, after review and discussion, the Park Commission motioned to recommend the approval of the bid from Clancy Construction, this motion was unanimously passed, we urge the Board of Selectmen to approve this bid as long as all references are confirmed, and then it says, the Lakeville Park Commission appreciates this portion of the project moving forward as quickly as possible, so work may begin, if there is any further assistance needed or questions, comments which require attention, please feel free to reach out to any of our commissioner, commissioners, thank you for all your assistance, um, with this draining project, a reality and we, making this project a reality, and we look forward to collaborating further, um, for the completion of this project, Lakeville Park Commission, thank you very much for that, um, so, um, do you want to do the motion, Rich, or do you?
Um, I, I'll make the motion, but I don't have the exact dollars for the bids, because I don't have that paperwork in front of me.
All right, well, you know what, I'll read it then, so, um, uh, so as part of agenda item number three, um, it says, the town went out to bid for the drainage project, drainage projects at the karate studio parking lot and the parking lot at the soccer field at Ted Williams Camp, the apparent low bidder for the soccer field parking lot was J M Shaw Construction Corp. Incorporated at $27,875, for anyone at home, all this information is attached to, um, and can be found at the website.
So moved.
Okay, and all those in favor?
I, the camera, I.
We have discussion, sorry, any discussion on that?
No.
I'll just say that all the, um, references were checked and they all came back, um, great, so, all those in favor?
The camera, I.
Fabian, I, um, and then the next one is to award the contract for the installation of a catch basin and associated grading at the Lakeville Mixt martial arts parking lot at Ted Williams Camp by Clancy Contracting Inc. in the amount of $26,500.
So moved.
Any discussion on that?
Second, Leah.
Up, second, and the only thing, um, I'll say is that those references were, have also been checked and they came back great, um, any other conversation on that one, Rich?
All set.
Okay, all those in favor?
The camera, I.
Fabian, I, all right, so, that's done, um, anything else, Rich, for the Park Commission?
No, not right now.
Okay, does the Park Commission want to bring anything else? I don't know if you have anything, um, otherwise, I think you need to adjourn your meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
On a personal note, I'd just like to say thank you to, uh, you and Rich and Maureen and Franklin for, um, helping getting these, uh, bids, um, through to tuition, it's been a long time coming, and, uh, I know I can speak for the board on this, uh, thank you very much.
Um, I, I'll reiterate my thanks to, to, uh, Rich and Maureen, Frank, for all their work that they put into this, um.
And Nate, Nate and Mike Nolan, Mike Nolan.
Mike Nolan also.
All you guys, yep, because, um, you know, open meeting law, Rich and I can't be working on all these things together, so that's why, you know, and and we're, we've been shorthanded, we've also been, you know, trying to deal with the COVID-19 stuff, so actually, to be able to get this done, I'm super appreciative of all the work, Maureen, Tracy, um, Rich, everybody, Nate has been putting in, Franklin, you too, so, and all the phone calls, I know that we've all logged countless hours of talking to each other, you know, trying to, um, just make sure this is done really well for the town, so, thank you to everybody. Um, Rich, I don't know if you want to, Nellie, thank you to you, too, I see you.
No more take, no more Lake Ted Williams.
Yes.
We're all gonna miss it.
Yeah, I don't think you will, um, so I don't know if you guys want to close your meeting?
I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Adjourn.
All set?
All set at 7:09.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And you now, all right, so, uh, Rich, we are moving on to agenda item number four to discuss and vote to extend the real estate tax deadline to June 1st.
Okay, um, okay, uh, let's see, um, as a result of the outbreak of the 2019 Delta coronavirus, the governor, March 10th, 2020, declaration of state emergency and the powers granted by the Board of Selectmen under chapter 51 in the Acts of, um, 2000, 2020, um, Tracy, you gotta do these individually or all together? I'm, she's not there, okay.
Let me unmute her.
Yeah.
Muted, Tracy, can you unmute yourself?
Frank, I think you can go if you want.
Tracy, do I have to do these individually, or I can do them all at once?
No, I, I think you just read the whole motion in its entirety.
All right, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Franklin. I move for the purpose of the first paragraph of section 57 of chapter 59 of the general laws that, that the date May 1, 2020 be extended to June 1st, 2020, I move for the purposes of the seventh and eighth paragraphs and the 10th, it's complicated, it's general laws, eighth and 10th and 11th paragraphs of section 57C of chapter 59 of general laws, the date May 1st, 2020, be extended to June 20, June 1st, 2020, I move for the purposes of the seventh paragraph of section 57C of chapter 59 of the general laws, that the date of April 1, 2020 be extended to June 1st, 2020, I move that the purpose of third paragraph of section 59 of chapter 59 of general laws that April 1, that April 1, 2020 be extended to June 20, 2020, June 1. I move to waive the payment of interest and other penalties in an event, in event of a late payment or an excise tax betterment assessment or an apportion amount thereof, water rate or annual sewer, this doesn't apply to us, use or any other charge added to tax for any payments with due on, on or after March 10, 2020 and made after its respective due date, but before June 30, 2020. Now, I'm standing in Section 57, 57a and 57(c) of Chapter 59 of the General Laws, Section 2 of 60a of General Laws or any other general or special law to the contrary.
Second all those.
Any discussion?
I, I just wanted to say that, you know, early on Debbie Kenny, who is our treasurer tax collector, she has a lot of compassion for people and she wanted to make sure that, you know, we were going to do this. You know, we wanted to do, tried to get this done, whether the state, you know, we were going to try to do it on our own if the state didn't say, you know, we could. So I appreciate all her efforts too with this whole thing. So basically, for people, this means that, you know, we're extending the deadline and there won't be any late fees or interest charged. So, that being said, do you have anything to add?
I'm all set.
Okay, all those in favor?
LeCamer, I.
Fabian, I. All right. Okay, that was, that was a mouthful, Rich. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
Hey, I read all the other stuff. Okay, so all we have left is any new business? Do we have any new business? Maureen?
No, no, I was going to make Rich read that again, but no, other than that, we're good.
Any old business, taking into consideration, we have a meeting on Monday? Anything?
No.
Okay, any other business that may properly come before the meeting? I just want to let folks know that we have a meeting again on, on Monday. So that's going to be more of our regular business, so.
Madam Chairman, a meeting on Mondays at 6, right? No.
Is it 6 or is it?
3.
3, okay, that's fine.
I thought it was at 3, okay.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
All right, so as there is no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, I second, and all those in favor?
LeCamer, I.
Fabian, I. I just want to thank everyone, including Lake Kim, for helping us with our Zoom meeting here. And, Rich?